All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, time is six thirty-two on, uh, May the twenty-first. This regular meeting of mayor and council is now called to order. Uh, roll call, all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Shelton, and I've not heard from him if he'll be here or not. Uh, please stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powell, will you do an invocation for us, please?
Father, we are grateful that today we got to go to a place and pick our leaders. Lord, we just ask you to bless those elections. Make them come out in ways that honor and glorify you and bring peace and, and well-run government to our nation. We're a little tired and weary of division and we'd like some unity and we just pray over this place that we would have some unity. Lord, we got a number of important agenda items tonight that is the citizens of this city's business. And, Lord, we ask you to bless each step, make the conversations peaceful and, and informative. And, Lord, guide this meeting in ways that make it the wise decisions that, again, glorify you. Lord, we thank you for our elected officials for all they do. We thank you for those people who work next door and who make our city just a wonderful place to live in, beautiful this time of year. And, Lord, bring, uh, bring peace to that place, too. Lord, our citizens are here tonight with something on their minds. We ask you to bless it. We've got some young people who want to step up and be on that ballot one day, and we ask you to bless them with what they see tonight and something they'll model in the future. Lord, we're grateful for the police who protect us and for all those who watch over us and, and, uh, Lord, rescue us when we need it. We are in this right to, and we ask you to bless them in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Tony. Okay, I've got, uh, a few announcements. All of these meetings that I'm about to talk about are held here in the community room. Of course, our council meeting, uh, started tonight at six-thirty. Have a tree board meeting, which has been canceled. It was for May the twenty-third. Planning Commission meets May twenty-eighth at six P.M. Our council work session is June the sixth at six-thirty P.M. Main Street Commission meeting, uh, June the eleventh at eight A.M. Historic Preservation Meeting, June the eleventh at six P.M. Downtown Development Authority Meeting, June thirteenth at nine A.M. And our next council meeting, June eighteen, six-thirty P.M., also in the community room. Okay, we have a number of presentations tonight. Um, first up, recognition of the Walton County Four-H Archery Team.
Thank y'all. Um, appreciate you letting us bring these young folks before y'all this evening. Um, the reason I wanted to bring the kids out to, to the council meeting is because I wanted to get them a little recognition. But I wanted you to see what the city has put forth and help make possible. Um, this program was started about six years ago and has been extremely successful since we started it. Uh, but with both our city partner and the Social Circle Ace Archery, uh, who helped us a lot. Um, you know, we practice, kids practice at Stevens Park. And the city has been gracious enough and kind enough to let us do that without, without charging us. Comes in, it truly something we couldn't afford, but you've looked after the kids. And this year is a, is, like to share some of their success. This is our senior compound team. Um, they competed in the state four arch archery match at Rock Eagle on May the fourth. Um, last year, we were fortunate enough to finish second. And this year, we brought home the win, uh, as far as the state championship. And then we won the best team overall in the state. Um, as doing that, they get to earn their master status, um, at Four-H. And they will get a trip to, they're going to be taking a trip in the next few weeks to, uh, Grand Island, Nebraska, June twenty-third through the twenty-eighth to compete and represent the state of Georgia and Walton County on the national level. Um, when we competed at state, the team competed against five-hundred-and-eighty-four archers from forty-two counties. And, uh, like I said, we were fortunate enough to bring home the win. Um, our seniors can, compound team members are Gabriella Alfaro, Ally Teague, Douglas Colburn, and Jackson Veer. Um, three out of the four live in the city, um, and go to school here. So, um, thought it was important to get them down here, not just, uh, in front of the county. So, um, this is Galen Davis. He's our, he's our head coach and, uh, been with us since the start. You got any encouraging words?
Like Tim mentioned, I mean, we're grateful to the city for all the support that, that the city provides. And not only the city itself, but the local businesses inside the city limits. You know, they've been very supportive of the team as well.
The, the blessing of winning is we get to go to Nebraska. The curse is we got a short time to turn a lot of money to, to make the trip. So, we've been very fortunate. Um, some of them always probably had kids in travel ball, understand that it's complicated. But, uh, the, the social, a lot of the industries in the county are stepping up to help us make that trip. And, uh, it, you know, it takes a village to, to, to pull it off. So, uh, but anyway, this is our team, and thank y'all for letting us come up this evening.
Well, it's, it's, it's great to have you guys here. Uh, certainly, uh, a great honor for you to, to have won the championship as you have. Um, if you don't mind, can we get, uh, a photograph? Maybe come up and stand in front of us? And if there are any family members here that would like to get in that, uh, we'll honor that as well. Yeah, thanks again. All right, next on our agenda, we have, uh, employee introduction and-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, city manager, this is one of those, uh, as some of you may know, this is one of those wonderful things that we actually get to do in our professional career. And it's to recognize the, uh, the service and the, uh, the strengths of one of our own in, uh, recognizing them by moving them forward in their careers to a promotion. Um, as you guys know, uh, Brian and I spent twenty-something years together, uh, on the federal side. And, uh, we needed some help down here, and I picked up the phone and called him, and he said, "I'm on my way." And he left a very lucrative job at Delta Corporate Security to come down here and be with us. Uh, I brought Brian in as a regular patrol officer. He went through the same process everyone else did. He went through the same FDO period everyone else did. He went through the same promotion process everyone else did. Uh, so he was given no, no benefit of kindness from me going through those processes. And here on our late, recent sergeant board, he came out number one. So, I'd like to read, "To all those who shall see these presents greeting, know you that reposing special trust and confidence in the fidelies and abilities of Brian F. Borick, I do promote this officer a sergeant for the South Circle Police Department. The rank of day is one May two thousand and twenty-four. The promotee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which promoted by doing and performing all manner of things thereto pertaining. And I do strictly charge and require all personnel of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And this promotee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations set forth governing the conduct and discipline of the South Circle Police Department, given under my hand the first day of May, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four, myself and the city manager, Eric Taylor."
Congratulations. You might want that as well. Thank you all. Sergeant, yeah, Sergeant Moore. Come on. Congratulations, sir. Well deserved. Congratulations again. Thank you. Uh, any more employee recognition?
No.
Okay. All right, downtown run-
Okay, this is the downtown rundown for May. We're going to have a concert in Friendship Park on Friday, May the thirty-first, from seven to nine o'clock. I reached out to the guys over at Critters and, and Templeate this afternoon to find out what the name of the band was, and they haven't gotten back to me yet. So, when I find that out, I'll include it in my weekly report. Um, Bike Ride Across Georgia is, um, coming to Social Circle. We'll be hosting them on Monday, June the third. Um, the riders will be coming into town starting around ten A.M. that day. Uh, the riders will check in at the elementary school campus, and there will be anywhere from eleven-hundred to thirteen-hundred bicycle riders here that day, they've said, yeah. So, um, most of our businesses downtown are closed on Monday, so a lot of them have, um, graciously agreed to be open for the day. And we're going to host some activities in Friendship Park starting early that afternoon, um, for our visitors. And then from seven to nine o'clock that evening, we will have a concert. Um, we'll have Chris, John, and Scott in the park. And then the local restaurants will be set up to serve food and drinks. Um, so we're looking forward to this opportunity because the last time we had brag at Social Circle was twenty-sixteen. Um, last on my list is Independence Day Celebration. If anyone is interested in participating in our parade, um, we, uh, the application for the parade will be on social media and the website, um, tomorrow. Um, one of our merchants has been helping to organize the parade, and, um, she just had a baby last week, Georgia, from the Grilling Station. So, um, we are gonna kind of take over to put the application out there. They've already got a good bit of folks that are signed up. Um, the parade will be at five o'clock on Saturday, June the twenty-ninth. Um, our entertainment will begin in Friendship Park at six o'clock that afternoon after the parade, and then fireworks will start at nine forty-five. This year, we're going to do things a little bit different. Um, we'll have the celebration in downtown with the parade ending. We'll still have folks in downtown. We're going to do, um, the entertainment in the park. And then we'll have a, um, sort of a, a gap of time between the concert and the fireworks, so everyone can go out and park at the high school to watch the fireworks. So, we're going to continue to shoot the fireworks off where we have. Um, we're just going to have all the entertainment in downtown this year, keep everything in downtown. So, that's all I have for the rundown. You guys have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Amber. I, one, uh, one comment. I was notified today, it's kind of short notice, and I don't know why it didn't dawn on me that they would do this, but the, the Motorcycle Ride for America is Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
They will be leaving Loganville at nine o'clock, going through Monroe, and they're expected to come through Social Circle somewhere between ten and ten-fifteen.
Okay.
And, uh, they'll go straight through the city, uh, cross the bridge, and, uh, exit down Spring Street. And you are aware of that, police, police and fire chiefs?
Yes, sir, we just had a, uh, meeting on that last Friday.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Amber. Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up for citizens' requests. Uh, are there any council requests? Hearing none. Um, I think we have a modification for the agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you explain that to us, please?
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, under new business, um, item number two, um, says Regional Pump Station, Aloe Way Sewer Bid Award. Those are actually two separate projects, and so they should actually be, um, two separate agenda items. Um, yeah, but I actually want to take this a step further and actually divide, um, divide this one into three different, um, agenda items. Um, as, uh, on the regional pump station, we're actually able to, um, save approximately two-hundred thousand dollars by dividing the project among two different, two different vendors. So, uh, what we want to do is have, um, the new number two will be, uh, bid award for Regional Pump Station Division One for the Force Main. Item number two will be the bid award for the Regional Pump Station Division Two for the Regional Lift Station, uh, actual lift station itself. Then item, uh, and then the following item, uh, the, the bid award would be for the Aloe Way Sewer, uh, project.
So, I'm confused, and that's not hard to do. So, the, uh, number two is now split into three. Are we making that item six and seven?
No, we, I think we just make it two, three, and four, just bump everything down.
Okay. All right, if you'll just, uh, guide us through that when we get there.
I will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need, uh-
Make a motion.
Make a motion? Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amended request.
Okay. Steve's second.
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Is there further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Uh, public hearings.
Yes, so, um, this, uh, property was one of the properties that the city reached out to the property owner at the time to see if they would, um, like the city to take this property through a rezone, to rezonate to R fifteen in order for single-family housing to be built. Um, apparently, that, that property was either in the process of being sold or it was sold right, right around that time. So, um, the new property owner came to us and wanted to rezonate to either market it for a single-family home or develop it with a single-family home, um, himself. So, um, the city was already seeking to rezonate this to R fifteen. So, this, uh, staff recommendation, um, is to approve the rezon request from R M.D. to R fifteen. And Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of the request to rezon from R M.D. to R fifteen.
Is the applicant here?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to speak?
Uh, Matt Jones. Um, when I first looked into, um, what I would do with the property when I was purchased, um, you know, being R M.D., we looked into seeing what we could do as, as R M.D., and it just didn't fit any of the parameters. It was too, the lot itself was too small to, um, to be able to put in an R M.D. type of pro, um, project on it. So, that's kind of why we are switching to R fifteen. Besides that, she pretty much, you know, said everything. It is really, it's very simple on this property.
All right, it's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this application. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the, of the staff.
Second.
Okay. Motion to accept by Steve and a second by Teresa. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. You can stay with us if you'd like, or free, free, free to go. All right, next up is our, um, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget public hearing. Who's presenting tonight?
Uh, Karen will be presenting. Um, Georgia law requires, um, as part of the annual do, uh, budget adoption process, to have a one-budget hearing. Um, and so this is that one-budget hearing. It has been advertised, and, um, it is, it will be open to the public once Karen gives a little overview.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Mayor, City Manager. I've spoken into existence. All right, um-
Don't ever call me Mayor.
All right, Mayor Council, uh, tonight I'm here to present the, uh, an overview of the FY twenty-five- ... department and one for the fire department. So, that'll be actually financed through GMA lease over a five-year period. Uh, here, so here- ... well, showing about capital outlay of about seventy-five percent. And here's some recommended water and sewer rate changes. Um, the water and sewer rate was adjusted in April of this year, and that's going to be used to support the infrastructure investment as well stabilize the water and sewer fund. And we have the gas fund, and this is a part of the ongoing, um, the undergoing rate study that's currently going on now. Social Circle is among the lowest rate in the region currently. Um, industrial gas usage is steady and gradually increasing. And this shows here your gas fund, uh, based on expenditures, uh, which is the largest expenditure is going to be your materials and supplies at about forty-five percent of the overall gas fund budget. Um, on the solid waste fund, the total budget requested is five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, five fifty-six. And as I stated early on, this includes a five percent, um, increase. So, the current rate is nineteen dollars and forty cents, um, per month, per cart. It'll go up to twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Um, the senior discount with the application, the current rate is seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents. That'll go up to eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And so this is per the current hauler. And the sanitation services are outsourced by contracted, um, companies, so you don't have any employees that are allocated in the solid waste fund. And that concludes the public hearing of the FY twenty-five budget.
Any questions for Karen?
The, un, under the solid waste fund, the five percent in, in their contract, is that the top they can, is that the cap, five percent?
But they can come back next year with five percent.
We're in, entering the last year of our contract with waste management.
It used to be five percent.
No, is, uh, remember, remember we, uh, redid the contract like two years ago? Uh, otherwise, this would have been the last year of that original contract. But because they changed the rates that year, they gave us, they extended us out one more year. Um, and gave them the right to, to, you know, to do the, the escalators.
Seems like it was two percent increase.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was asking, if it changed in that, their contract.
I'd have to go back and re-look at the contract, see what it exactly says. Um, if I remember right, it may not have a set dollar amount, uh, a set percentage, if I remember right, uh, based on market conditions. But, uh, but at any rate, uh, we're entering at the last year of that contract, and we'll be going up a bit on that this year.
Just going to suggest, maybe we can get a better rate, please.
We can go off a bid. Not sure we can get a be, better rate, but we can go off a bid.
So, how are we going to know?
Yep.
Put it out. Because I think they've been creeping up, 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 up.
It, it ain't, it, I mean. The landfill dumping fee?
Then you have, just like everybody else, you have fuel costs, and then you have, uh, you know, that's, that's a job where I'm sure they have a hard time hiring people. So, I'm sure they have to pay people, I mean, a pretty healthy rate.
Okay, anything else for Karen? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor for comment. If there's anyone here to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, if there's anyone here to speak in opposition, please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, uh, bring it back to the council. There's no action required, uh, by council tonight. The vote on this will be in June. Okay, brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. Um, so we have, uh, I think nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Um, first item is the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting of, of April the sixteenth. Item number two is the minutes of the mayor and council executive session from April the sixteenth. Item number three is the minutes of the mayor and council work session from May the ninth. Um, item number four is the minutes of the mayor and council executive session from May the ninth. Uh, item number five is an approval of an amendment to the SPOS budget for Fire Station Seventeen, waterline, furniture, and mattress replacement and building improvements to the training building. Uh, what this is, is you guys currently have thirty thousand dollars, um, allocated in SPOS to Fire Department this year for a generator. They do not need that. It was replaced last year. And so we're reallocating this to, uh, to waterline, some furniture, mattresses, and building improvements to the training building. Item number six is a bid award for the annual galvanized, replacement project. And that will be going to Matthew Development Corporation in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and five cents. Uh, number seven is the recognition of the name change for the city solicitor. He has changed firms and, uh, this is just a, um, name change only. Uh, no, no changes in, in fees or personnel or anything like that. Item number eight is an approval of the contract renewal for the city manager. And item number nine is approval of ordinance change for insurer license fees. Uh, what this is, is that, uh, I remember recall last year based on census, uh, we were contacted by GMA, they said, uh, you're over five thousand residents, you can charge fifty dollars, uh, per insurance company that does business in the state. Well, they went back and knocked a few people off and now we're below five thousand and that, uh, makes us go back down to the forty dollars. So we need to, um, modify that. So recommend approval, it gets an agenda.
Okay.
Okay, the other bids?
The bids were-
For what we approved in the Matthew bid.
For the, yeah, there was only one bidder.
So it was all the one bidder?
Only one bidder. And I'll add that that's, that's a budgeted item every year and that is within the budgeted amount. Yep.
So, is there any other discussion about Magnolia Street? I don't see it on here, on here.
Um, I believe that we discussed later on in the evening.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Second.
And a motion from Tyson and a second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, unfinished business, uh, we have none. New business. Uh, item number one, acceptance of the I twenty frontage road and approval of an IGA with the Joint Development Authority to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute all related documents. And I believe this is for the Rivian Parkway.
Yeah, so, so this is an item that came up, uh, actually since our work session and, uh, we were asked on Friday to get it, to get this approved as soon as possible. What this is, is, uh, as you guys know, there's, there's a, there's a new roadway that runs parallel to I twenty that was built for Rivian Project approximately three miles. Um, approximately one point four miles of that is in city, uh, sub circle city limits. And, uh, we were contacted by the JDA, as was Morton County, to turn over that portion of the roadway to the respective jurisdictions. Um, and, uh, there was actually an IGA that governs it, uh, that actually dictates that we are not responsible for any maintenance or paving or, or repairs or anything else. The only thing we are responsible for is running police calls and also, uh, fire calls if there are any, um, inevitably. Um, and, uh, what this also allows us to do, it allows to add that four-lane road, one point four miles into our, road inventory for purposes of, of making.
It doesn't have red lights on it?
There are red lights on it. It's actually on two seventy-eight.
So we don't like to get no more red lights yet?
That'll be G dot.
I'm just saying, do we add red lights to our seating now?
Oh, yeah. Actually, we got, I mean, think about that would've no longer red, you know, one light town's actually about four lights.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, there's five over there, I think.
Yeah, there were five something like that now.
Can I interrupt? You all have to turn your mics on, please, while we're talking without your mics on.
Sorry.
They're having a hard time in the back.
My bad.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that takes care of item number one. Uh, entertain a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, kind of motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Um, here comes the confusing part. Uh, Eric, I'll let you handle this.
Okay, so, um, the new item number two is a bid award for Regional Pump Station Divis- Division One. Uh, this is for the, uh, Force Main portion of the project and, uh, recommend that we, uh, award to a low bidder, which is WL Griffin Company of Gillsville, Georgia, with a bid amount in the, in the, um, with a bid in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. Recommend approval.
Tyson, you see the bidders on that?
Yeah, I've seen it on that one. That's why I asked about the other one.
Okay, take a motion on that one.
I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Motion from Steven, a second from Teresa. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same saying. Motion passes.
Item number three is a bid award for Regional Pump Station Division Two portion of the project. This is for the, uh, regional lift station. Um, the pump station por- uh, portion of the project and, uh, award that bid to Mid-South Builders of Lithonia, Georgia in the amount of one million, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Recommend approval.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion from Teresa and a second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Um, and, uh, next item is a bid award for the Alaway Sewer, uh, Gravity Sewer Project, um, going on in downtown. Uh, recommend, uh, awarding the bid to RDJE Incorporated of Newton, Georgia in the bid amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Make a motion to accept it.
Okay, motion from-
Got one question. That's gonna finish us up in downtown though.
Yes.
We, so we can fix the streets finally.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the roads can get, work gonna get paid after this.
Okay, take a motion.
He did. Steven, I mean-
I made a motion, second.
Okay, motion from Steve, second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, next item is consideration of establishing no parking areas in Laurel Oaks subdivision. Uh, we discussed this at the, uh, the work session. And I think where we landed on this after quite a bit of discussion was, um, declaring, um, all public streets in Laurel Oaks, on both sides of the street, no parking.
Is that where we were? Is that the way we remember?
I thought it was three hundred feet from the entrance.
That's what we originally recommended and that's-
I said it was gonna still have the same issue or problem if you do that.
So, our recommendation would be to start with the three hundred feet. Um, see where you go with that, but I thought where we landed was, was on the, uh, on both sides, on the entire subdivision.
I thought, well, of course, I, my next question was, is when you said that, I was gonna ask, cause we said something about going out there and marking the three hundred foot with a flag and I've been looking for the three hundred foot and ain't seen it.
Okay.
But I'm, I'll make a motion to do the three hundred foot.
I mean, we could do the three hundred foot and it comes back and just keep working it out.
Huh? It's by the fire hydrant. It's marked by the fire hydrant.
Is it by the fire hydrant?
Yeah.
When you come in on Laurel Lane, it's, uh, I put a black mark on the asphalt or on the concrete, it's about fifteen feet past the fire hydrant. So we can start at the three hundred feet? If that don't work?
We, we can revisit it.
Reduce it.
Yep.
See, make a motion?
I'd make the, I'll make a motion.
So just to be clear, this is for three hundred feet on both sides of the roadway on Laurel Lane and Richmond Drive.
So they can park, park on, well, let's get a second, I, I second the motion.
What about the, uh, what about all the other streets? I mean, you got, you got two other streets of that-
You got Ashland Court down there.
That comes off of Laurel Lane. If we're gonna do it for, we might as well do it for all of them, three hundred foot. You know what I'm saying?
So you're saying now-
Cause I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I, I almost got hit in there again yesterday. A car was coming out and I believe it's the same lady. She was bound and determined. She is not stopping. She's gonna get in the other side of the lane and come on out.
Well, that's all of it. I don't think Ashland Court is three hundred feet long, is it? Not very long. It may be three hundred.
It's longer than that. You ain't talking about, about football field, ain't.
Yeah.
You're starting to make it really confusing.
Alright, so we're, we're-
I just, just make the motion for the two streets you said and let's go.
Okay, okay.
And the discussion part was, that's both side, they-
Laurel Lane and Richmond Drive.
We have a second.
We don't have a second yet.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, Tyson did the second.
Alright, okay, alright.
He's second in important discussion.
We're in discussion though. That's both sides of the road. That's the one that makes it quick. So they can park on either side of the road.
After the three hundred foot.
At the three hundred foot, that's, that's-
Uh, actually, actually, no.
Yeah.
Um, no, no, because, because the right side of every road in that subdivision is still no parking.
Correct.
So that's what I'm asking. Are we changing that or we just saying three hundred feet on it?
No parking on either side for three hundred foot. That's what we agreed on the other night, I thought.
But also continuing the, the, on the right-hand side of the road, no parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So no parking on the right-hand side of the road?
So the only cha- the only change we're making is, is adding, adding three hundred feet on the left side.
Okay.
Be good with that.
Yeah.
Are we gonna mark it? Yes.
Are we gonna sign it?
We'll sign it, we'll mark it. It'll be no mistake.
And then we ticket it.
Can I make a request on that? Instead of going out there and adding more signs, cause it's signed E-Got now, can we paint it?
Yes.
Mark it with no parking on the curb?
Yep.
We can paint it yellow.
But then he can't aff- he can't enforce the, yeah, he can't write a ticket.
Well, anything that you enact now, of course, will take effect as soon as we, sorry.
Yeah, you gotta come to the microphone.
Sorry guys in the back.
Uh, just keep in mind that anything that we enact this evening, which is, I'll find one a good, whatever the council approves. Uh, once we notify, uh, once it's accepted and approved and then we notify the residents of that area, it's thirty days past that point where we have to just issue warnings and, and those things. And then after that thirty days, by Georgia law, we can start writing citations. So everybody's gonna get at least thirty days.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna go ticketing tonight.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just saying about ticketing, you could ticket it without the signs, just, just, cause it says no parking right here. Cause I know sometimes you have to say a fine may be enforced or something, like a certain sign, fine it.
Once you, once you guys sign it in, it's a done deal. So, and we'll enforce it. Any questions for me?
Just hope this helps y'all issue over there.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion passes. Okay, next up we had the, uh, downtown development authority of Social Circle board appointment. I'm gonna ask for a motion to table that appointment tonight because we still have some questions on the candidate forms that were filled out.
I make a motion to table it.
Second.
Until, uh-
Until our June, uh, council meeting.
Okay. A second. Motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, last item on the agenda tonight is continuing our, uh, departmental budget presentations. Uh, we have th- three tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about the finance department tonight since Karen wasn't here, um, at the last meeting. And then we'll talk about, uh, police and fire, uh, tonight. And then after tonight, that will just leave us. Where at our work session, we'll be talking about our public works divisions and also revenues.
Alright, Mayor Council, I'm gonna present the, uh, finance department, um, budget. Uh, the finance department has changed just a, a, a little bit here. Um, the total requested amount for FY twenty-five is, uh, four oh seven, seven fifty-nine. That's a decrease of sixty-one thousand, two forty-four from the current budget of four sixty-nine, um, oh three. And it's about thirteen point one percent decrease. And that is because currently the finance director position, uh, which I hold is a contract, um, position. So with the contract, we don't have the, the benefits and everything that would actually be paid out to an actual, um, staff. And then we have one part-time, um, person who's in there. And that's the accounting, um, specialist. And they currently work about twenty-four hours a week, so about three days out of the week, they're, um, in the office to cover things that, um, need to be covered when I'm not, um, on site. And that person actually receive no benefits. The only thing that the city actually covers is just your basic, uh, FICA Medicare for that person. And the department includes one full-time employee with benefits and that's the current HR payroll, uh, specialist. And then we moved, um, the customer service representative out of the finance department, um, budget. So their salaries and benefits were actually moved over and split between the utilities because that is what, that's the customer service person handle, um, the utility payments. And then also credit card fees because most of the credit card fees is charged to the city is based on, um, utility payments that customers, um, make. And so we reduced, um, a couple of lines, um, dues and fees because of the fact we don't have a full-time person in there other than just the, the one. And so we reduced that by sixty-two sixty. And then also general supplies went down by fifty-two percent, so about eleven thousand, um, dollars because we didn't need that much. And those two line items were just only, uh, one full-time, one, uh, part-time person in the finance department. And so, and that concludes the, um, finance department portion. Take any questions?
Alright. Uh, current budget request this year is gonna be a one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Shows a, uh, increase of seven point nine percent. Uh, our major increases covered in four areas. Salaries, property and liability insurance, contractual services, and another category we had was other benefits. Uh, our salaries are still, are gonna be funded at the ninety perc- ninety-five percent. We've shown unfortunately for the last two years, we've carried four open positions. So we think that we can confidently reduce our budget across that line, uh, which of course will include, uh, include benefits as well, down to ninety-five percent. Hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, prove the city wrong this year and fill all four of those positions. But, um, erring on the side of caution, I think that we can, uh, go with the ninety-five percent rate. Our property and liability insurance, uh, we really had notes saying this, it increased over forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, I have no rhyme or reason as to why that happened. Here we go. Contractual services, we increased it to five thousand dollars to, due to unforeseen software vendor. Uh, what happened was we were using a current RMS system for some of our records management. And they basically came down and said, we aren't supporting that anymore. You can buy our new version at seventy thousand dollars or you can not be supported. And we chose not to go back with them. Uh, we found another, uh, service that would cost us fourteen thousand versus the seventy. So, uh, our increase across the board was five thousand. We were paying them five thousand dollars a year. We just needed five more and now that's gonna cover everything. And we're gonna pick up the other four within our budget. Uh, the other benefits that we have here is the Peace Office Association of Benefits Dues. Uh, that's something that, it's thirty-five dollars a month per officer every month for twelve months. And that's something that literally everyone around us pays for. We are the only department in this area or in the county, uh, that does not pay for officers and their POAB dues. Again, it's something that we can, it's not a huge raise for them, but it's also something that they don't have to come out of their budget for. And it will cost us about, so- and it'll cost us about seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, uh, the city manager and I have been talking at length since I got here about implementing a reserve program. Needless to say, we have a number of people who are retired in our areas that would like to come back and be a part of law enforcement, but they don't wanna come back full-time. They'd like to come back in and serve the community on a very, very limited basis. Um, so the forty-four hundred would represent, um, the minimal amount of uniforms and equipment that we would need to, to get them up and running. And then the court and special services, we asked for ten thousand there. That will actually help us pay for our current services right now. Unfortunately, what we have is, on, on the Wednesdays that we have courts here, we have to shut down the entire police department. I mean, that's everybody. Uh, from our administrative person to everybody that's carrying a badge, to the school resource officers, we have to bring those people in just to work the courts. Uh, so this money will allow us to basically bring in those four reserve officers to act as bailiffs, and that way the police department doesn't have to stop running. The court will run on its own. Um, they'll actually work that day for our clerk of courts, and it'll be a lot easier to transition in and out. But we'll make that a detail rate for them. That way it's attractive for them to come work it, and we don't have to worry about corporate security. I believe that will do it for me. Uh, that does it for me. Are there any questions?
I guess I'm gonna ask this, if that's especially for the court, we can't put that port towards some of the court costs or the court budgets? I mean, if that's, if we need officers for the bu- for the court system, is basically what we're trying to do.
And, and basically what I said was that we would put this in my budget this year, and then next year we would look at it, moving it over to the clerk of courts, but it would just be easier this year to just put it in my budget.
Yeah, what we're actually...
I mean, that's...
Well, what we're actually looking at doing is, is, um, you know, starting with the reserve officer program itself, and this would be a function of the reserve officer program. Um, and then, um, you just kinda see how it goes, and then, you know, dollar-wise, it doesn't matter if it's in this budget or in the court budget. Um, si- still seem a lot of, of money, in general fund money.
It, it can't be an add-on to a ticket. No, no, I'm not saying add-on to the ticket, I'm just saying that, so we'll know a- actually how much the court cost us, cause it's still costing the city, so that'll give us an idea how much the court costs the city at that way.
And we'll, and we'll still, we'll still know, um, the way we track it. Um, it'll be coded as, as court, uh, court personnel.
And the same thing, when the school, when the school have something, they have officers, they're usually resource officers, though, right?
Yes, sir.
So they're already paying for those officers.
Yes, sir.
For that rate. I'm just trying to figure out how to, you know, because I know if it's resource officers there, sometime our officers are there because it's a big event or something like that, so these officers can be used for, for those events as well.
Yes, sir.
If they need to be.
Yeah, they can be, you know, come in for, you know, for, you know, somebody's on vacation, and we need somebody to come in. Um, hire somebody, you know, have them come in, um, for that time, as a reserve.
Okay. Let's move that on out the way. Alright, getting, um, I guess I got the clicker, huh? So, I will keep it short and sweet, uh, cause there's not a whole lot of changes. Uh, our total budget, uh, request this year was one, uh, one million, five eighty-four, nine sixty-six. Uh, the current budget year was, uh, that we're in now was one, five sixty, uh, six twelve. That was an increase of point oh-one-five percent, or twenty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars. Um, the bulk of that increase to the, about nineteen thousand dollars of it is in the group insurance changes, retirement, FICA, um, group insurance stuff, it's in salaries and benefits, um, that I don't have a lot of control over. Um, the next little increase we had was in repairs and maintenance of the building. Um, we're, we're, we're needing to take care of some stuff in the buildings. Uh, they were pretty minimal changes, uh, across the board. Um, we had a small increase or a slight increase for repairs and maintenance of equipment. Uh, as y'all know, our fleet is not getting any younger, and it's getting more and more expensive to keep it on the street. Uh, also, we, uh, at that, we went up seventy-seven hundred and fifty dollars this year in repairs and maintenance of equipment. Um, we're also gonna suffer some loss of losing Captain Pittman, who was our in-house EVT. A large portion of what we used to do, we were able to fix in-house. We no longer have an in-house certified mechanic, so we would send a lot more stuff out, so, um, we're gonna start with the proposed number, but I really don't know if that will cover it and get us through the calendar year. Um, we had a very slight increase in cell phones, in our cellphone line. Uh, keep under, keep in mind that our cellphone line, while it's labeled cell phones in the budget, is all our wireless devices. It's all our iPads, it's our docking stations, it's all our air cards, uh, it's our mobile data terminals and the fire trucks. It's, it's labeled cell phones, but it's stuff we get through, basically services through AT&T. Um, and part of that this year is, we run five iPads, and we've got to start swapping them out. So, uh, we had a, a very minimal increase in that line, and that's what that reflects, is the starting to change out iPads and equipment. Did I go one too many? Yeah, can you back, can you back us up to the last? Sorry. Very next one, please, Susan. Yep, there we go. Uh, we had a decrease of sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars this year in our general supplies. Uh, that's reduction of forty-five percent. Uh, having known the budget process, as the city manager talked, uh, last month, or earlier in the month with the, um, with the library stuff, there was some reduction there, and basically we had an annual, uh, PP replacement for turnout gear. Uh, it will go away this year. Hopefully, we will get it back next year and get back on track. Uh, we had a very small decrease in sma- um, sma- small equipment for, uh, anticipated replacement, and basically the decrease in small equipment is the increase you see in other supplies. We basically just shifted, uh, two thousand dollars from one to the other, and it balanced off. Um, and then an increase in uniforms is due to, uh, our vendor continues to rise, and as with everything, uh, the, the numbers are a moving target. Uh, but we had a thousand dollar increase there. Um, any questions over the little bit we have changing this year, between this year and next year, last year?
Building maintenance costs is at six or seventeen?
Both.
Both.
Yes, sir. It, uh, we're, we've had door motors fail, we've got glass out there failing, we, we, it's seventeen, we've had some other issues we have to maintain. We don't want the buildings to get in bad shape.
Doors are notorious for having to be replaced all the time, in every fire department in the whole country. You know, I mean, they're going up and down all day long.
Yeah, you figure they probably go up a few ten thousand times a year, per door.
Alright, any, any other questions for Karen?
And then I guess the last thing on that, uh, overall was the, will we be replacing the, uh, mic, my explorer that's eleven years old with about eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand miles on it?
Okay. Alright, that completes our regular session. We do have a need for an executive session. So I'm gonna entertain a motion for potential discussion of real estate, personnel, and litigation.
So move.
Second. Okay, we got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. Thank you all.